Thanks. Let's go ahead and get underway if we can, please. The first item on the agenda is public comment on issues that are on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the council? All right. Well, we'll go ahead then. We have a docket to approve for this Thursday's council meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Ellinger to approve the docket. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We also have a summary to approve today. Is there a motion?
I have a motion by Councilmember Ellinger and a second by Councilmember Myers to approve
the summary of October 27th's work session. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have some budget amendments. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Blues to approve the budget amendments. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have several new business items. Do I hear it? I have a motion by Councilmember Ellinger, a second by Councilmember Myers to approve the new business items. Any discussion? I'm sorry. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got one question on F. And maybe Kevin can help me with this one. This is the construction easements and right-of-way purchases for Citation Boulevard. It's a short question. I'm assuming here that we do have to purchase significant amount of property for this, for the roadway. We're not just buying easements with this $7.9 million.
Actually, Dr. Blues, I apologize because I'm not at liberty to have any information on that. I would really defer to the Division of Engineering to answer that question. I can have somebody over here to answer that question if you'd like.
If you could just, maybe even just give Andrew a phone call.
I will. I will. Certainly. Most definitely.
All right. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you. Any further discussion on the new business items? Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. And number P, is Commerce Lexington here, or do we have Anthony Wright or Joe Kelly? Who's the...
I saw Mr. Kelly upstairs just a moment ago. I'm not sure that he's made his way down just yet.
I can wait till someone comes down.
All right. Let's go ahead and perhaps he will be here when we come back around. Anything further? All right. Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question on item O, the Raven Run Tourist Center project. Is there anybody that's working on that here? Hey, Commissioner. Thank you. This looks like an increase in the contract just for the design of the basement access. Is that something that was not? Why do we need that included now and we didn't know that before?
There is a desire to have a basement at Raven Run, but there is not funding for it. What this does is allows for a design that that could be added at a later date.
Okay. And that's funds budgeted through, is that general fund dollars or that bonded?
It would be part of what the fund that was allocated for Raven Run.
I couldn't, I know that some of the Raven Run work was where they had their own money that was donated into a fund, but I didn't know if this was, it doesn't really specify from what fund it's coming.
Yeah. The money that was donated was actually then put in the general fund as part of the account classification for the Raven Run project, so it's all in one account now.
Okay. They're not two separate accounts. Okay. Thank you. Mayor, I also had a question on the item that Councilmember Ellinger is asking about. And this actually goes back to our chair of our partner agency regarding the purchase of service agreement. Councilmember Myers, I know that the outside agency, it's item P and the Commerce Lexington PSA. And I know that through our partner agency, we've been talking a lot about reviewing PSAs and making sure. And as an outside agency group, we have not had an opportunity to take a look at this and have full discussion. I wondered if that would be something we'd want to consider prior to moving this forward, or if you had any thoughts on that as the chair of the committee.
As you know, we've talked about moving more to oversight, but I think that with the dollar amount here, it would be maybe a good idea for us to take a look at that.
Okay. So I'll allow for the question, but I probably wouldn't move that we move this item into the outside agency after the questions are asked today. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to maybe hear from someone from Commerce Lexington before we do that because I don't know what impact this is going to have on current operations. I know this money was budgeted in the 2010 budget, and I'd be very concerned about having to stop ongoing plans and economic development efforts that they're engaged in. So, and I think we sort of went through this at the budget time and to, I guess, hold this up again, I guess I'd have some concerns about that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. To that note, I would only say that I believe last year Commerce Lexington didn't get their PSA for nine or 10 months into the year, and it didn't hold up anything that they were doing. So I don't think that by putting this into committee and looking at the PSA is going to hold up what they're doing.
I think I just, my comment was that I thought we should hear from them to, just to confirm that that is in fact the case. So.
Let's, Councilmember Myers, it's your...
Oh, I just was wanting to clarify that last year they didn't get their PSA for 10 months, so it didn't hold them up last year. I don't think it's going to hold them up this year. I don't think there's anybody here from Commerce Lexington. Oh, is there somebody out there? Okay. Anthony's here. I don't want to throw him on the spot, but... This is Doug Martin throwing you on the spot here, Mr. ... Please. The question, we were looking at possibly taking the PSA with Commerce Lexington and put it into the outside agency oversight committee, take a look at it. Mr. Martin wondered if that would hold up the operations for Commerce Lexington. I made the comment that last year I think they didn't get their PSA for 10 months and it didn't hold them up, so I'm not sure that it would hold it up this year.
It's getting more and more difficult to be able to operate that way, though. I mean, I know they really wanted to get this going. There's a couple of payments that we basically have coming up in terms of quarterly payments, and so it'd be kind of tough for them to keep trying to operate on reserves.
I guess my question then would be, why are we just now getting this now instead of back in July?
Yeah. The main reason is because as we talked, as the Economic Development Task Force Committee talked, it seemed to me that there might have been some issue or concern or interest in changing the metrics and measurements that we actually use to look at what they're doing. I hadn't heard any more discussion about that, so I decided to move forward with putting this through in an effort to get them paid since it's already been budgeted.
Okay. The question to put it in committee came from Ms. James, so I don't know, maybe she has some questions for you today.
Well, the, I'm going to talk as I'm thinking of the question that I need to ask you, but what I would say is if there were some thoughts this year of changing some things around, then what was the reason in previous years for it being so late? Because this is not the first time that it's been at this late date that we've seen the PSA come through. And during the budget discussions, that very final day, when we were voting on, I think, Commerce Lexington and DDA, it was, we can come back later and look at the purchase of service agreement and make sure that we have all the things and evaluate it. And so it was kind of rushed through that day. How much rushing are we going to do? I think at some point, we really need to take a look at what we're doing. If every time something happens, it's, we've got to hurry up and do it. I don't know how, as everybody puts it, we get our arms around economic development. So, you know, what other opportunity we will have to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do with our economic development with an organization that gets $552,000 to do so? And, you know, if we put it into out, that's the committee, that's the council's decision to put it into committee, and I will be making that motion to do so. As a matter of fact, I moved to place item P into the outside, am I allowed to do that at this point? I moved to place item P into the outside agency oversight committee to work as expeditiously as possible to report back to the council of their findings.
I have a motion by Councilmember James and a second by Councilmember Ellinger to refer item P to the outside agency oversight committee. Is that correct?
I think the second was by Ms. Crosby.
I'm sorry. What did I say? Okay. It was Ms... Okay. It was Ms. Crosby. Councilmember Crosby. Any discussion on the motion to refer to committee? That's, that needs to be the focus of our discussion now for the moment. Councilmember Blues, Councilmember Wallace, and Councilmember Lane and Martin.
Well, I'm going to support that motion because I think that there are a number of questions that, you know, that should be asked in the course of a, you know, of a review than we have more time for here. So I think that this is a good part of the process and that since we are allocating a good portion of taxpayer money to Commerce Lexington, we want to make sure that, you know, that we can, we can be accountable for where it's going, what it's doing. And so, as I said, I'll support that motion. Thank you.
I will say, of course, that you do get quarterly reports on what they're doing with the money, how it's being used, the items in which the investment is being received in terms of activities and results. And there are two members of the council who sit on the Economic Development Committee of Commerce Lexington that represents the council there, too. So, Councilmember Stenit and Councilmember Gray.
Gray.
Counsel.
Vice Mayor Gray. Councilmember Wallace.
I, too, am going to support Councilmember James' motion as a member of the outside agency oversight, or what it's called now, committee. What happened was, we asked several questions of DDA and Commerce Lexington. We didn't get a chance to meet as a group, and so we voted on it as a council, and we never saw the budget or did we get those questions answered. So I'm sorry somebody from Commerce Lexington isn't here today to answer some questions, but I agree wholeheartedly and will support that motion to move it into the outside agency committee.
Councilmember Lane.
I'd ask the council to maybe reconsider this because Commerce Lexington relies on our funding to do the economic development work for our community. And I don't know there are many businesses that would like to go for four months without being paid. That's one-third of a year that they have not been compensated for. And at $45,000 a month on the average per month for their fee, that's $180,000. And if we kick it over in a committee and we're going to go on break here soon, you know, we may not end up paying them until after the first of the year. I don't think that's good business practice. I would rather have them focused on implementing their program than having to come back and make additional presentations to an oversight committee. So I will be voting against this.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm still perplexed about the confusion over Commerce Lexington because they've been here many times. They were here, what, just last week? The whole shop was over here. Bob was here and Jenna and Pam and their, other folks were here. And they were here to answer every question that we had about them and we, to ask about budget stuff. They give us reports about how they're spending our money. They've showed up on numerous times to answer our questions. And so I guess I'm at a loss to understand why their budget is being held up again. And so I think we, as a council, have the right to continue to talk with the Commerce Lexington and to look at the budget and to look at things, but to say that we don't know how they're spending our money and to say that somehow we don't have any input in it, or to somehow say that, you know, this is all a big mystery to us, we're just not doing our part, I think. Because, I mean, they've been here numerous times and they give us lots of reports on this. So I just, I don't get it. And so I'm not going to support this motion. And I think we have the right to look at these things, but, you know, they're going to, you know, not be able to conduct the economic development operations, and that's going to affect real things. And so I don't think we should hold them up. They've been very patient by coming here every time, and I think they're good community partners. And I think we should be a good community partner and go ahead and get their, get their budget approved so they can do the work that we've asked them to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. Anthony, I guess what it comes down to me is we do need to work on this PSA. I don't think it's clear from Commerce Lexington's standpoint about what we're asking them because I think 15 people up here are asking them something different every single time they speak to this body. So I think we do need to clarify what we want them to do in our PSA. And I think that was the role of trying to form an economic development task force a year ago and trying to work on this. At the same time, though, Councilman Lane, Councilman Martin are correct. They've been before. They were here last Tuesday. Anyone in this room can show up and ask questions during that meeting in which they reported out. Can we get them their money without this PSA being finalized? Or is there a way to pay them? Because what this is doing is indeed holding up their efforts. And if we pass this motion, then I'm going to ask that we don't, they cease any economic development operations until they get a check. Because it's not fair to ask them, and every councilman has had since July 1, to form a task force, a meeting, every opportunity to look at this agreement since July 1. So it's not fair to say, well, we asked to look at it back in June. Well, we've had five months. Now we're entering our fifth month to look at this. Almost up to a half a year, and to hold up that money is just not right at this time. So I'd be in agreement to definitely review the PSA. There are some serious things in that we need to change, but to hold up their funding, if there's a way, Anthony, you can figure out to present to us to go ahead and pay them while we're looking at this, that's what I would be looking for.
I'll certainly work on doing that. And I just want to remind everyone, they give, as part of the Bluegrass Business Development Partnership, again, that is what the PSA is funding. It gives categories through A through E. Workforce development, expansion of minority business, startup existing business recruitment, Bluegrass Business Development. It spells out in each one of those categories what the dollar amounts that are going to be for those particular activities and functions. And so that's something that's been consistent with how we've done this for two years now. I would say that, you know, I know that it has been late before, and part of that has to do with my being new and not knowing that this whole PSA process was part of it. When I found out about it, I certainly took care of it, but, you know, after two years, you know, my first year here, I wasn't aware that I had to do that. So that's my mistake that I hopefully corrected. But, but I think that in terms of being able to get them the money to continue to operate to do what needs to be done, I think would be a good thing to do. And I understand that there's further questions that you might have. I think they've already committed to being here every month for the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. If there are opportunities to do tweaks to what we're doing as an operation, that's an opportunity to bring that up and have them discuss that with you in a public format. But I'm with Councilmember Stenit, Councilmember Martin, that we need to move forward.
Any further discussion on the motion to refer? Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just speak to this for just a second. You know, as Councilmember Stenit said, they were here last week for Budget and Finance. I think that this, this motion that's being made is because even presenting for an hour, there's massive confusion. You know, there's, there's certain things that have been asked for in the PSA that aren't there, that are supposed to be coming, and this and that and the other. I think there's a great deal of frustration. And I would say that if you're an entity who is receiving this kind of resource from this government and you're on the docket but not in the room, that's another reason why I think folks have frustration. With that said, I'm going to go back to what was said, unfortunately, during the budget process, and that is, we don't have a backup plan. We don't have something else in lieu of this. I think that that's what councilmembers are wrestling with, is what do we do? Because I think there's a great deal of unease with this partner and so forth. I will vote against the motion only because there isn't a backup plan. I want to see activity done. But let me point out that there is a high degree of scrutiny and accountability that this body is asking for that isn't there. And again, if you're on the docket for your PSA to be approved, I would expect you to be sitting in the room, somebody from that organization, because you don't need to feel this question coming out of, out of the hallway. But I think that's what you're seeing here, and I don't know, holding that up and scrutinizing that and not having that money at work is the best option. I would agree with Councilmember Stenit that if there's a way to put this money in, put it to work, but also for this body to be scrutinizing that, that that is the route I'd like to go. But I can't, I can't support the motion because there is no backup plan, and we do need to be putting our money at work. But at the end of the day, I think that's, that's why there's frustration up here in what, we're all looking at this from 15 different angles, but there is a common degree of uncertainty and frustration. Please know that. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's proceed to vote on the motion to refer. Those in favor of referring?
Mayor. Just further discussion.
Okay.
You know, I do applaud the comments of Councilmember McCord. He's very on point, as well as the other councilmembers. When the Mayor's Training Center came forward to the council in 2006, 2007, must have been 2006, and the accountability wasn't there, their funding was pulled. And there wasn't a backup plan at that time either because we still, to this date, have not created another program that helps for workforce development in place of that. We gave the money to, we gave the money to Commerce Lexington, and they tell you they don't do workforce training.
Oh, that...
So, you know, I, they have told me that that is not, that they did not take the place of the Mayor's Training Center. So that is something, you know, we talk about a backup plan. We can create that plan. If we see that there's gaps that are not being fulfilled, we can take money that we would appropriate to one entity. We can do it. We try to enhance our economic development staff here. Couldn't get that through. We try to enhance that. We can use that money in our, we have an economic development office that we can fulfill and fulfill the needs of the city through that. So alternative plans, we just got to, you know, put our boots on and figure out what an alternative plan would be and stop going with the status quo. Thank you.
Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. I had signed up to speak, and apparently they're not showing up on the screen.
Well, what we had were a series of people that wanted to speak on the issues, on issues pertaining to the new business items and on the motion to refer. I've been taking names and working through those. So if you wish to speak on the motion to refer, just raise your hand. We'll take care of that. Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you. I guess I'm kind of glad to find out that I'm not the only one that's confused about this. In fact, when I saw this, was on the docket for today's work session, I made an appointment with the folks at Commerce Lexington and met with them this morning about this, the PSA. And in fact, they know it was on the agenda because I told them it was on the agenda this morning. But I'm very confused about what Commerce Lexington does for us in terms of economic development. Because I think just for the first time, I heard the other day at the Budget and Finance meeting, that they don't focus any attention at all on retail development. And that was kind of, that came as a surprise to me, so I'm, I'm not sure that I'm clear on what our expectations are of Commerce Lexington relative to economic development. And also, coupled with that, we have recently decided to reconvene the economic development focus of the council. And so I think that all of these things need to be considered in the context of our individual efforts as well as a council. And I would like to see this referred to the committee for consideration. Whether we vote on it today or not, whether it passes today or not, I still think that this needs to be sent to a committee for review of the PSA in advance of next year or for some kind of consideration about what we want to take on as an economic development committee. I will actually support the motion to defer this. I would like for it to not hold up their funding, but I do feel like this is important and that we do need to take a real hard look at it. Thank you.
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if we go back and watch the tape, back during the budget process, it was determined or decided by this body that the Economic Development Task Force would actually take a look at Commerce Lexington. They have a meeting scheduled for November 19th. We have partner agency meeting next Tuesday. I don't think they could be prepared to meet with us and answer questions and things this coming Tuesday, a week from today. So I would like to know if Ms. James would be amenable to amending where she moves this to and put it in the Economic Development Task Force meeting on the 19th, provided that the chair has room for it on the agenda. I will say that I would be concerned if, if Mr. Wright, you find a way to get them their money without this being signed. I understand what Councilmember Stenit wants to do, and I understand that, but the purpose for these things is to make sure that we have an agreement in place before we give people money.
That's not going to happen. That's not an option. So no funds will be expended until this is approved.
Okay. So if Councilman James, Councilmember James would be willing to move this to the Economic Development Task Force on the 19th of November, I think that would give Commerce Lexington more opportunity to be prepared. And it also provides the full body of the council there in that meeting to ask questions rather than have it go to an oversight committee and then have to come out of there and then the greater body have questions that may not have gotten answered.
I'd accept that change. That's fine.
So moved.
Councilmember Crosby, are you comfortable with that change in the motion as well? All right. And the motion now is to refer to the Economic Development Task Force. Any further discussion on that motion? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I still want to know, I guess, who's going to do our minority business program while we hold their funds up? Whether the CL Airlines deal is going to get tanked because we've held the funds up? Because part of these funds are going to the CL Airlines deal. I'd like to know whether we're going to stop our workforce development efforts, and they do do workforce development efforts. There's $78,000 in this line item for workforce development. If Pam Trautner were here, and she was here last week, we could have asked her about their efforts in workforce development. I think our inability to understand economic development is not Commerce Lexington's fault. And I'm, I guess I'm concerned about making, taking this vote without, once again, Commerce Lexington having a chance to come here and answer the charges against them. And so I'm going to make a motion to table this until later in the meeting so that they can maybe have an opportunity to come here if they're in town or available to answer some questions from the council. So moved.
I am uncertain whether or not you can move to table a motion to refer to committee. The end result of that would be the motion to approve it would be back on the table again. It'd be part of the motion for new business. So I'm going to rule the motion to table the motion to refer out of order. If the motion to refer is approved, it will go to the Economic Development Task Force. If it is not approved, then a motion to table this particular item would be in order at that point. All right.
Any further, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I don't want to get too much into the retail area, but I think this is worth a comment, is that I don't know of any economic development agencies that specialize in recruiting retail. Retail is not the type of business that economic development agencies try to recruit because they're looking for jobs that are manufacturing products and providing services, that are high-paying jobs, that are higher-density jobs. And retail is generally a lower-density job, and it's a lower economic type of employment. And retail is generally a lower-density job, and it's a lower economic type of employment. Also, recruiting a business when you have a workforce available is completely different from recruiting a retail. A retailer is not looking for a workforce. A retailer is looking for a market, a retail market, that they can define as far as how big it is, how many people are in it, what the income levels are, the socioeconomic status, et cetera, so that they can match up the retail business and the products and services they offer to the trade area being served. And that is not a role that any economic development agency I've ever heard of gets involved in. Now, you can do things like do a retail survey, and that's basically a trade area study, determine how big is the market and what types of services are missing. But here again, it's really up to the individual landowner to recruit the retailer into the marketplace. And I wanted to bring that up, because we've said this several times, and I've tried not to comment on this, but I feel that that is not one of the activities where we want to invest the community's money in trying to find retailers. That's just not it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to refer to the Economic Development Task Force? All right. Let's proceed to vote, and let's do so electronically. Those in favor of referring Item P to the Economic Development Task Force, please indicate by voting yes electronically. Those opposed, vote no electronically. And the motion passes by a vote of eight to five. That now takes us back to the discussion of the new business items. And the next person I have on the list to address that topic is Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, I'm sorry on such short notice to get you over here, but I did have just for clarification on our Item F, on the purchase of the easements and right-of-way. And I'm assuming that we're going to have to buy a lot of property for that.
Yes, sir.
That roadway.
Approximately 60 easements, as well as partial pieces of property. This would be for the entire alignment of Citation Boulevard.
That is from Alexandria on down to the connection over the railroad at near Georgetown?
Yes, sir. That is correct. The entire alignment of Phase Two.
So that accounts for the, you know, the 7.9 that we're going to have to expand on that property?
Yes, sir. The 7.9 million is the estimated value of all that property combined. Essentially, what this does, it allows us to go out and purchase that right-of-way and not bring every other parcel before you all, before we close on it.
Great. Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question on Item J. Commissioner Webb or Mr. Rayon? This is accepting yet another piece of greenway that we seem to have an abundance of already that we don't know what to do with. We don't mow on a timely schedule. I'm just kind of curious. It says there's no budgetary impact for accepting this piece of land, but those of us who've been around a long time know that's not true. I'm just trying to figure out what the real impact is to maintain this, yet another piece of greenway, and who's going to maintain it, and who's been notified that we need to start maintaining it? Because this issue keeps popping up, and we still don't have a clear answer yet.
And I agree with you. But I can't answer the question right now, because I have not notified anybody other than this blue sheet, made any notifications about the acceptance of the greenway.
I mean, I hate to postpone acceptance, but yet we keep taking on property, or we keep making decisions not to take on property, because we can't afford to maintain it. Yet here's a piece here that says there's no budgetary impact, and that's just not true. There is a budgetary impact going forward of maintenance, and we can't keep accepting properties. I mean, is this because, I don't know, I have no idea why we're accepting this piece of property on here. It doesn't say.
The greenway itself is part of a development plan, and was set aside to become a greenway when the property was developed. And it has just reached that point in the process where it gets turned over to the government.
And who's going to maintain it? And whose division? Is it going to be parks, engineering, stormwater?
It's not going to be parks, and it's not going to be engineering. I mean, it's not going to be engineering, and it's not streets and roads. And I can come back with that information...
You want to come back? If you can, today, or we can postpone it until next week?
That's fine.
I'll make a motion to table Item J until next Tuesday's work session. So moved.
I have a motion to table Item J in a second. That motion's not debatable. Those in favor of tabling Item J, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's vote electronically. I didn't hear much in the way of response there, so...
Excuse me, Council, Mayor. I don't believe there is a meeting next Tuesday.
Well, I think the motion is to table indefinitely. I didn't hear...
Well, until our next work session, which is two weeks from today.
All right. Then, all that's debatable about that is whether we table it to that date or some other time. If there's no discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Those in favor of tabling Item J till the next work session, please indicate by voting aye. Those opposed, indicate by voting nay electronically. And the motion is approved by a vote of nine to two. Make it a nine to three. All right. Let's return to the discussion, Councilmember...
I'm not done, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I have a question on K. When is the Christmas course scheduled? Is that the 15th affirmed date? I was going to ask Penny just to make sure, so we can start. I think another calendar showed a different, the last night of our council meeting, works out. I just want to make sure what the exact date is. If we can confirm that, Mayor, you can announce maybe during a mayor's report or something.
I have the 15th.
It's for sure the 15th? Okay. Just wanted to double-check. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Webb. I had one more question about that Item J. Some of our greenways we actually use for trails and other things. So is this greenway meant to be just green space, or is it meant to be trail? Or do you know what the plan is?
I'm sorry, I don't know what the plan is. We are just, water quality is just finaling up the greenway, environmental quality, the greenway manual that is not in place. And I think we'll address a lot of the issues that Councilmember Stenit brought up, but I will come back, and we'll have all the information with this particular greenway.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further on the new business items? All right. Those then in favor of approving new business items A through I and K through O, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We're now ready to proceed with the presentations, and the first one is from the special planning committees.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, there were several motions, and we just finished the final draft of the summary this morning, and councilmembers haven't had an opportunity to see it. So, I would like to bring this forward at the next work session.
All right. Any questions for Councilmember Gordon? We'll move along. Councilmember Stenit, Budget and Finance Committee.
Well, we yielded to Councilmember Gordon's committee so they could get their minutes done, because we had two meetings on the same day and had a 24-hour turnaround for one person to do. So, that wasn't possible by the Thursday deadline. So, we yielded to have that meeting take precedent, and there was too much in that one meeting even to get to Budget and Finance. So, we still don't have minutes yet completed.
So, we're ready to roll ahead then, it sounds like. Mr. Winty, if you'll come forward and give us a rundown on the snow and ice control plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, it's, on an annual basis, the Department of Public Works will give an update to the council just in our efforts to prepare for the upcoming snow or winter season. And that's effectively what I wanted to do today. Last year, I did not present, because effectively there wasn't a lot of information to report to you, and I really didn't want to waste your time. As a result of the ice storm last February, I thought it was, it would be helpful to discuss some of the items that we learned as a result of that event, in addition to the 2003 ice storm event, and just give you some numbers to run down as far as how we're coordinating The first thing I just wanted to mention was the amount of coordination that we have. We've actually had two meetings, both, one internally and one with external agencies, primarily that of the state, Department of Highways, Fayette County Public Schools, and Lex Tran. This year, unlike years past, what I wanted to incorporate was, in addition to our efforts and how we prepare and numbers as far as tonnage of materials that we have to treat the roads, the capacity as far as vehicles and staff that we have on hand. I also wanted to mention the fact that Parks and Recreation is going to incorporate their snow plan regarding what facilities they're going to be responsible for, as well as the incorporation of Lex Tran's emergency routing if a snow event occurs. And I thought that would be helpful. The document is not in its completed form, but I'm hoping to have that finished by the end of this week. Just running through as far as the numbers are concerned, roughly 1,600 miles, lane miles, are what is treated on a given snow event. And that is a pretty considerable number as far as just how we have to prepare. This is both with the urban county governments' efforts, as well as the efforts of the Department of Transportation. Some of the information as far as just numbers that we have, 2,500 tons of salt at our current salt barn location. We will have 3,000 tons available at our K-9 facility off of Old Frankfort Pike. And we will have a contract for an additional 10,000 tons if necessary. Last year, we got into a bit of a pickle because of our inability to compete with larger cities to the north for available salt. And now that we have a, I guess, a unit price contract with a vendor to where we can call in salt when it is needed, and hopefully will avert any issues of concern with respect to competing with larger cities when the time comes. In addition, we will have usually to the order, with salt brine, to the order of 7,500 gallons that we will have on hand, and we use that jointly with the state. And then additionally, we'll have calcium chloride for treatment. We'll work closely with, well, our staff, as I said before, Streets, Roads, and Forestry. We will be on call for any event that occurs 24/7, in addition to the coordination that we have with the folks from Water and Air Quality. And Fleet Services will be on staff 24/7 in the event that we have to service any of our vehicles. The GIS is very, very important and integral to this process, in that every year, with requests from council, in addition to new development, we'll update our program and highlight that in the maps that you see as examples here on the screen. That is something that we review on an annual basis, based on their requests from you individually, as well as the areas that we see newly developed. If they have a final surface, then, and there is a connectivity to, as a major arterial, we will incorporate that in the GIS to reflect that as part of the snow plan, and then rank it accordingly as a priority route. You can read through most of this. Nine areas that we have divided as far as how we treat these. One thing I will mention is that there is an effort to build an additional salt barn out at Athens Boonsborough. We've got design plans in place. As far as construction, I'm not exactly sure. I've got Sam Williams is accompanying me today and may be able to address that issue. But in addition to that, I wanted to say, as we make this update and the plan is finally implemented, I will post this information on the website. And actually, as opposed to the typical booklet that you receive, one thing that I noticed in areas to the north, that's, I think, a little more efficient, is they are generating their snow plans in more of a pamphlet distribution item, and that would be easier to post on the website, as opposed to going through all the lengthy detail of information. It's just, you know, hitting all the points directly as far as contact numbers, information, who you need to contact if you have a question. And that was something that I felt would be helpful, especially if we, in the event that we were to open the EOC again, it's good to have that information available to everybody that's manning the chairs. If they have a question for me, or if I have a question for them, we have the correct information available to respond to a given occurrence. So with that being said, I'll just assure you that we are prepared for an occurring snowstorm event or ice event as we had last year. And I can assure you that, given our ability to respond during the ice storm event in February, our coordination was second to none. We had a tremendous, a tremendous response, and I can guarantee you that we are not going to get plowed over during the event of this snow season. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Winty? Councilmember Gordon, is that current or stay listening here? All right. Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Kevin. I know last year, we had a couple of, at least First District, that were the streets the priorities may have needed to be looked at and changed. Have you made many changes to the priority ones?
Yes, we did. In fact, a number of those that you had brought to our attention were incorrectly labeled on the map.
Okay.
And so we did make those corrections to adjust to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, there were some specific requests that you had that we just, we couldn't validate as far as just the materials.
Okay.
But there again, last year was a unique situation in that we had such a difficulty in just getting the materials to treat.
Okay.
And whereas this year, I don't think we are going to have to worry about that concern at all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Stenit.
Kevin, just for record-keeping sake, everyone who wants to know what their street rate can look online. It's on there?
We will. I will have it posted online. Yes, sir.
Good. And then, the school, the areas around, the streets around the schools, the street may not be at priority, but have we gone back and looked at those streets specifically around a school, it's in a residential neighborhood, to make sure we're getting those? Because we've had some issues, the buses slipping last couple of years, and those streets are rated a four, but yet, you know, these are folks traveling on them.
We do review the bus routes as part of the priority rankings for our snow plan. So when that changes as a result of new development or changes in their route, that's something that we coordinate with them to make sure that we incorporate as well.
And what are those routes usually? If you know a bus is traveling, are they a two, a three?
Yeah, I think it's no less than a three.
Okay. And how much of the city do we actually prioritize and plow? I think that's a misnomer. I think during the ice storm, everyone thought we plowed the whole city, and every street got removed. What's the percentage-wise that we actually do under this plan?
Percentage with the roads that we maintain to that, that we treat, I really don't have a firm number on that. I can say that we...
Less than half?
Um...
Yep. I was thinking around 25 to 35 percent.
I'd say it'd be at least a third of our roads that we maintain that we actually treat and plow.
Okay. Do we also treat and plow state roads, state-owned roads?
No, we do not. That's the state's responsibility. Well, with, excuse me, inside New Circle Road, we will maintain state-maintained roads. We'll treat those roads.
And we, but we get no reimbursement for treating those roads, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crosby.
I just wanted to clarify or follow up on what Councilmember Stenit said. If it is a bus route, it should be prioritized. It will get a ranking, no less than a three. Is that what you said?
Typically, it's no less than a three. Now, there are areas where routes will terminate in a court, and our priority is to maintain continuity with our routing. So typically, courts will be a lesser priority. If it is still a bus route... If it is still a bus route, if there's an issue, we will address it, but we do not prioritize where areas terminate along a given route at a court. So just to, to clarify that.
Okay. So like if, if there's a pickup at the end of, and they have to go back up a hill, a bus has to go back up a hill, you would terminate even though it comes down and has to circle down. It's not necessarily a court per se, but the bus, there's, it stops into a private area so that it's ending at another neighborhood.
If that was, if that's something we saw...
It goes, has to go up a hill. So it's, I guess, the, the snow removal is being terminated halfway up the hill, but the bus still has to go down the hill for a stop and come back up a hill.
And that's something that we could evaluate because one thing that we do keep in mind is, you know, areas where there are steep slopes. So if that's something that would be an impact, then it would be something that we could address.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. When are the, the, the final snow priority designations going to be issued?
The maps will be complete this week. I've already been working with the likes of Mr. Williams and, and other departments to make sure that everybody is on board with the requests that have been made and us making a final determination. And I think we're at a pretty sound place to where we can have a final, final print of those.
So the council's not going to get a chance to sign off on it, we're just going to be told what you guys are going to be doing?
Effectively, but I mean, we're open. If there's something that you feel that we need to address, we can always make, you know, amendments to what we've, what we finalized from a given year.
Well, in the 10th District, we've made a number of requests for snow priority and haven't ever heard anything back as far as what, what the final decisions have been made on those. And I guess now maps are going to be made, so.
Right. And actually, we did, we looked at a number of those, especially from your district, and did, did make those, well, I shouldn't say all of them, but we did incorporate, you know, a, a number of those requests.
Because I know that as far as school bus routes, there's a lot of school bus routes in my district that are not on the snow priority removal list. And so I guess I just, I guess I would have wanted more an opportunity for dialogue about what, what actually was approved and not, because I, I've never heard back from you guys about what the final list was. And so I guess it's too late now to have any discussions about it.
No, it's not too late. I mean, like I said, it's, it's always something that's, in our regard, is fluid. So it'd be something that if, if you feel, and there's, you know, a need to, to match that. In large part, you know, it's just a matter of the, the traffic volume that we have to accommodate, you know, first and foremost as far as those priorities are ranked. And then we step down the line based on the needs as they're assessed, either slope, you know, bridge assessment, and, and those types of items. So I, you know, we, it's something that we can always keep working and improving, but we also have to manage that with the materials that we have to operate with.
Oh, I understand. And, but I think communication's important because obviously there are, there are things in, in my district that are very serious safety issues that, that we want to have addressed. And, and there are other places that, that appear to have, that be on the priority list but have what I would consider far fewer safety issues involved. And, and one can only guess why they got on the list to begin with. So, so that list is coming out this week?
Yes, I will have that. In fact, I'm, I hope to have that ready for you tomorrow, to be honest, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just a couple of quick questions, Kevin. I appreciate you coming and, you know, last year during the, the ice storm, what was very interesting to watch was that weather pattern really caused us to get about halfway through priority ones. We, or you go through priority ones and get ready to go to twos, ones were freezing up again and you'd have to come back and it was, it was confusing to, to a lot of folks. But I know so many departments help out when there's a situation like that. I mean, truly, there's, there's a number of folks that do it. But who is ultimately the person that oversees this or which department, I guess, is, is the one? And who is it live body that, that actually is the point person on, on that, in that event?
That would be our new director, Sam Williams of Streets, Roads and Forestry.
I want to put a face with this, you know, because again, it's, it's something that there are so many people that have to lend a hand to it that it is good to know who that, who that person is.
Right. And that, you know, that's, that's a fair statement to make. And one thing I will say as well, that last year was, especially during the ice storm event, it was very difficult. When we opened the EOC, effectively, the point of contact for Public Works was myself. And now we've got and recruited a number of other bodies to man that station so not any one individual has to, you know, spend, you know, 14, 16, 18 hours at that location. But we can rotate and we'll have the, you know, the documentation in place so if anybody needs to be contacted, we know the numbers to contact for any given emergency. The coordination was, like I said, second to none. I think we did an exceptional job with the likes of Sam, all the other divisions, you know, that responded as well as departments and coordination with the state and the city and, or, excuse me, with Lex Mark, Lex Mark, Lex Tran. I'll get it straight. But...
Yeah. And I really appreciate that because again, when you have a, a weather pattern that, that we had last year, it did something very unusual in that it snowed, we plowed it, pushed all that to one side, then it froze in place, which covered all of the, the drains. And then as it warmed up, everything melted and froze again and became a sheet of ice because it had nowhere to go. And, and I really applaud all those folks that lent a hand in that situation. Again, thank you for, for bringing this forward. But folks do need to know that, as Councilmember Stenit said, it's, we, we don't cover everything. And then when you have an event that causes you to have to go back to your priority ones in the middle of plowing the other things, that's, that's how the system is set up and there is method to the madness. But thank you all for what you do.
Certainly.
Councilmember Henson.
Thank you, Mayor. The question I had, I think, was very similar to what Councilmember Martin talked about. And that was like, if you have a particular area in a neighborhood where it's not a priority one or a two, but it is a slippery slope and hazardous, maybe it is on a bus route, if we call, is that something maybe we could get taken care of?
Certainly. We would address that if it was, if it was an issue.
Okay.
And that was one of the things that we were making certain we were doing as far as just that coordinated effort, once again, during the ice storm. You know, if that was something to where, let's say there was, you know, an emergency response to where we needed to get somebody in before our buses were able to arrive at that location, you know, we were, we were right on top of that or at least treating to assist so that there wasn't any problem in facilitating that type of a response.
Okay. Because I was thinking of one area in particular, it's in, like, in the very back of a neighborhood and it's, you know, it's like a country road and it could be very hazardous. So I was just curious. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thanks. Anything further for Mr. Wintey? All right. Let's, thank you very much. Let's proceed with council reports. Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the Neighborhood Development Bond Fund List.
I have a motion, but Councilmember James and a second, but Councilmember Crosby to approve the NDF. Any discussion? Mayor? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's the, the Neighborhood Development Funds, not the Neighborhood Bond Funds.
Oh, shoot. Sorry. Sorry. I've got bond fund on my brain.
All right.
Branded on there.
Anything further? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thanks, Mayor. Also have another, one announcement. I received an email from Yvonne Giles, and you all probably know Yvonne very well. She's a historian here in Lexington and runs the Isaac Scott Hathaway Museum. And she's announcing that throughout, in Sunday afternoons at 2:00 all through November, there'll be walking tours of the African Cemetery Number Two, which is the historic cemetery that's along 7th Street. It's actually at 419 East 7th Street. And there's a cost for this. This is a fundraising opportunity for the cemetery for, for maintenance and such. There's a cost of $10 and this is their 100th of the cemetery. Celebrate with us the 140th year anniversary of the founding of the burial ground at that location. At this location are Civil War and Buffalo soldiers, ministers and trustees of early churches, as well as some of the free African American leaders, organizers of the Colored Fair, the Colored Orphan Home, Masons, Knights of the Pythias, and others. So if you're interested, please contact Yvonne Giles at the Isaac Scott Hathaway Museum. Or if you don't catch that and you want to call my office, you can call me at 258-3216 and I'll be happy to forward information to you on that. Also, I'd like to recognize students from UK that are joining us in the audience, at least now on this side. I'm not sure who the folks are on the other side, if everybody's with UK. Thank you for being here. It's good to see an audience full, kind of, nobody wanted to sit in the front row. It's kind of, it's not as scary as it looks, but thank you for, for being here. I hope that you do have public comment today and hope someone will come to the mic and, and tell us what you think about Lexington or just tell us what's on your mind. So thank you for being here. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to welcome Beth Mills and her students today. And then I also wanted to make note of November 11th, Governor Beshear has proclaimed it as Radio Reading Service Day. And many folks in our central Kentucky area use Central Kentucky Radio I for their reading service. So everyone is invited to an open house at Central Kentucky Radio I Studios, which are located at the North Side Library at 1733 Russell Cave Road. And that's November 11th between 3:00 and 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. This Sunday, one of the things that, that we started in Lexington to increase the, the bike culture and, and try and move us more towards a pedestrian friendly city was the Second Sunday kind of catalyst event on October 11th. And out of that came the idea of doing a Second Sunday every month, the Second Sunday of every month. Now will entail a escorted police bike ride for about two hours somewhere in our city to either one of our existing parks and their trails or to a place where we're going to be building. And again, this is designed to, to grow our bike culture, to, to showcase what we already have, because there's a ton of, of things that folks don't realize we actually have here trail wise. And the third thing is, is to showcase what's coming, because there's a number of things that are in the pipe. But this Sunday, there, we have moved the, the time up to 11:00 because of the Veterans Parade is that day at 3:00. And so I want to encourage everyone that is watching and everyone in the audience that at 11:00 to, to meet at the courthouse, the old courthouse area with your bike. And, and we will take an escorted police bike ride to Veterans Park. It's about two hours long. And then please come back at 3:00 to honor our veterans, past and present during the parade. The other thing I'd like to mention is on Wednesday, we, this past Wednesday, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO meeting, the state had informed us that the federal government is, is rescinding $150 million of federal transportation funds for Kentucky. And it's not an uncommon event to rescind funds, but it is one that is very large and now affects the urban areas. And I'm asking, Mayor, if we could have Max and, and the other folks from the state maybe come next week to speak specifically to that rescission issue and what that means and the projects that it affects, because certain things that are in the pipe right now aren't affected and certain things that are a couple of years down the pipe are certainly going to be affected. And I think it's very important that we understand this isn't a, an issue that is local and it's, it's political that this gets funded over that. This is something that is coming down from the federal government mandated to the state and it is a $150 million pulling of transportation funds. It creeps into CMAC funds and transportation enhancement funds along with road projects. So very pertinent to everyone sitting around this room. So if we could have Max or, and/or the folks from the state come next week.
Commissioner Webb, could you arrange for Max Conyers to join us either next week or whatever time works best on the schedule?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. And then I think Max was already coming based on what we talked about last week. Discuss long range plans, so he may fit in well for the 17th meeting. Just a couple of things. Want to, want to remind council members and the commissioners as well, we're going to have a Capitol bonding workshop on Thursday to discuss the items we've already approved for bonding and what we can and cannot bond going forward, as well as the public safety radio presentation as a follow up to the presentation made to workshop a few weeks ago. So that'll be right before council meeting starts. And also tonight, the North Point Neighborhood Meeting is still on at 7:00 PM at Brown Station High School. And also, they've invited the Strawberry Fields Neighborhood, which is adjacent to North Point, to attend the meeting as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to place on the docket for the November 5th, 2009 council meeting, a resolution changing the street name and property address number of 3473 Yorkshire Medical Park to 3445 Richmond Road, effective 30 days from the date of passage. So moved. Just a little background, this is the Boy Scouts headquarters and it's right next door to a building that's a Richmond Road address. And this has been vetted through police and fire and nobody has a problem with this address change. So, thank you.
Further discussion? All then in favor of adding that item to the docket, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then just to follow up on what, on what Councilmember Stenit said, if anybody wants to take a look, we have the big, huge box of the contract if anybody's interested in looking over the contract for the, I guess it's the Madison County where we're, they want us to piggyback onto their contract. We have that up in the council office if anybody wants to take a look at that. Mr. Lucas had hand delivered it, I think, yesterday. So if anybody's interested in taking a look at that or having your aides take a look at it, it's, it's upstairs. Thank you.
Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. A few weeks ago, Councilmembers Henson and James and Vice Mayor Gray and I also had the opportunity to, to meet with Professor Mills and her, and her class at, at UK and, and try to answer some of, some of their questions. And still, they came down here to see us this afternoon and we're, 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 we're really happy to see you. And, and I would echo Councilmember James's invitation to, to come to the mic and, at public comment time and, and give us a sense of what's on, on your mind. We've got a lot of, of, as you know, UK city town gown issues and, and we'd like to hear from you. Couple of announcements, Mayor. The BCTC Public Forum tonight, when the consultants and planners will, will bring forward their, their design plans after many, many public, public meetings and discussions for the, the new Bluegrass Community and Technical College campus on the Eastern State site on, on Newtown Pike. That's at 6:30 tonight at the North Side Y on, on Loudon. I think this will be an informative and an interesting meeting and I, I think members of the public, especially in Northwest Lexington, will be, will be pleased with, with what they see this evening. Tomorrow, the council staff and the council would like to invite all of the LFUCG family to come join us in the annual United Way fundraiser. Soup, sandwich, drink, and I, I think desserts as well, all for a donation of $5 to the United Way. That's from 11:00 to 1:00. All are invited. Looking forward to see you tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to welcome the UK students. I was a UK student at one time and so were probably many of these folks, so I would not be surprised to see some of you be seated in these, in this chamber at some point in the future. So welcome here today. I have a, a motion to make earlier today when we had our Services Committee meeting. There was an item on our agenda called the curb replacement program. And we have taken that off of the agenda for the Services Committee, but I would like to make a motion to put that into the Water Quality Management Committee because the curbs are an integral part of our storm water management system as the, the curbs help contain the water as it's channeled through the neighborhoods to the storm drains. And when the curbs are missing, then part of our drainage system is compromised and the water's dispersed in undesirable and unanticipated places. So I'd like for the Water Quality Management Committee to consider a curb replacement program to be funded in whole or in part through our water quality fee revenues. So moved.
Any discussion? Councilmember Blues.
Councilmember Feigl, I believe you're referring to the Water, Water Resources Oversight Committee?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had the wrong name.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Motion is to refer the curb replacement program to the Water Resources Oversight Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Feigl, anything further? Councilmember Feigl, anything further?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Henson.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to welcome the students here, Beth's class. And it was a pleasure to meet you then, and it's good to see you here. So hopefully, you will have some comments for us. Hope things are going well for you. I made a error in my council report last Tuesday with the Veterans Parade, and I announced it at being at 4:00, and it's actually at 3:30. So that's this Sunday, and I think it should be a very nice parade. Also, this past Sunday, they had the grand, or the ribbon cutting of the fusel courts at Valley Park. And it was just real incredible to see the speed soccer. I had never seen that played before. There were 10 teams there that participated in a tournament. And it was just amazing at the turnout, and it was a great addition to that park. Also, there's a Cardinal Valley Neighborhood Board meeting this evening at 6:30 at the Village Branch Library. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Lawless.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry I missed your class. I was trying to get there, and meeting ran over. And then I got my car wound up on South Lime and kind of in a big hole. But, so finally, I gave up. But I have a master's degree in social work, and so I was sorry not to be there. And I'd love to come again, and love to have another one of your students again. So all things are possible for social workers. I'd also like to announce that the Ellsford Neighborhood Association is having their meeting tonight at 7:00 p.m. at Woodland Christian Church. That's right across the street from Woodland Avenue at 7:00 p.m. And Columbia Heights is having their Neighborhood Association meeting at Ashland Terrace, which is at the corner, I guess, of Ashland. I know where it is, but I don't know the address. Anyway, that's where they always have it. Sunset and Columbia Heights. And if you drive around long enough, you'll find it's up on a hill. Anyway, Ashland Terrace is hosting that at 7:00. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Mills, for coming too. I graduated from your program at UK. And part of the reason I'm up here today is because while I was at UK in the College of Social Work, I got involved in student government, and really saw how you can make a difference with policy. And so I applaud all you that are in the program and hope you do well. Secondly, Mayor, could you have somebody from the administration contact the school board to see if they will have a representative there to speak at this public safety workshop on Thursday, if they are still planning or desiring to have a cell tower put on top of Tate Street School?
Okay.
They may have scrapped that, I don't know. But if they still intend to try to do that, I'd like to hear from them at that meeting.
Mr. Green, if you'd check with Ms. Blodgett about making those arrangements with the folks at the Fayette County Public School, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. And then obviously, parents of students and faculty at Tate Street Campus, I hope that you'll be able to attend that meeting at 5:30 on this Thursday here in the chambers, to get your questions answered as well.
Floor.
Is it third floor? Fifth floor? Okay, it's going to be fifth floor. Fifth floor conference room instead of this room. And then, Mayor, you and I will be appearing together Saturday. We're having a press conference for the new disc golf course that's in River Hill Park. And I wanted to invite everyone out for that. It's going to be at 9:30 a.m. Saturday, November 7. So it's 2007, but I think it's 2009 in my email. And we have a new disc golf course, the city's latest one, opening up in River Hill Park. It's in the corner of Crosby and Manawar. And I want to thank the council members, my colleagues on the council, because the funding for that course came from NDF funds. And so people often ask what we do with that money. It's $10,000 a year that each council office has to spend in its neighborhoods. And anytime that we do something like that, I like to get that out there, so that when the budget season comes around and people look at that $10,000 per council district and wonder what happens with it. We've done some fantastic things in the 8th District as a result of that money. So we invite all the council members out as well to that ribbon-cutting ceremony. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Palomar Hills Association meets Monday night, November 9, at 7:00 p.m. at their clubhouse. The Southland Association meeting will be next Tuesday, November 10, at 8:00 a.m. at the Bluegrass Bank and Trust on Southland Drive. The Beaumont Neighborhood Association will hold its annual meeting next Tuesday, November 10, at 6:30 p.m. at the Rosa Parks Elementary. And the Palomar Town Homes Association will meet Tuesday, November 10, at 6:00 p.m. at the clubhouse. Apparently, it's annual meeting week. Also, the Picadon Neighborhood Association, the Southland Association, and the Friends of Wolf Run are inviting volunteers to help with Hackemback invasive plant removal party. Basically, they're going to remove some invasive plants from the Wolf Run Creek. And they invite you to on Friday, November 13, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and Saturday, from November 14, from 1:00 to the finish, at the Clay's Mill Greenway at the intersection of South Bend Drive and Clay's Mill Road. They're going to remove invasive bush honeysuckle shrubs and make room for native trees and shrub plantings. And that's as many words as I can say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Does any other council member wish to report? All right. I have a mayor's report. Motion to approve the recommended appointments would be in order. I have a motion by Councilmember Crosby and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. That takes us down now to the public comment section. Does anyone wish to address the council? If you would, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Adam Handy, and I'm a freshman at UK. And I'm a part of Professor Mills' Building Communities and Making a Difference class. And while this time's probably meant for questions, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for letting us come and observe changing our communities in action. The change that you all are instituting really affects us as college students, whether we live here throughout the year or just for 10 or, nine or 10 months out of the year. So thank you all so much for your dedicated service. Really quickly, something that I guess I could ask you is a question I posed to the few council members that came to our class. One of the things that I believe is that while we are the leaders of tomorrow, we are also the leaders of today. So I guess for the mayor, I would like to ask, how do you plan to collaborate with people our age more effectively, maybe making these meetings more conducive to younger people's schedules, or finding ways to just collaborate them in different ways?
I'll tell you what. How about if after the meeting, I come down and we'll just have a visit, and we can talk about that and anything else that may be on your minds?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Again, thank you all so much on behalf of our class for letting us enjoy this. It was really interesting to see government in action. So thank you all.
Thanks. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Councilmember Crosby and a second by Councilmember Ellinger that we adjourn. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you.